We're going to call our Shelton City Council meeting to order for November 5th, 2019. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
By allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone, for attending tonight. Donna, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Dorsey.
Here.
Councilmember Inesco.
Here.
Councilmember Cronz.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Any changes to the agenda this evening? I know the city manager has one. Jeff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would like to add an item tonight to the action agenda for the lease of the area known as Post Office Park for our holiday celebration this winter. We do have the resolution here, along with the agreement, that all council members have a copy of, and I'd like to talk about that this evening during action.
Okay. No objection, add that to the action agenda? All right, that'll be item three. Anything else from the council as far as the agenda changes? Okay, hearing none. We'll have council reports, starting with Councilmember Dorsey.
Did you see me?
Yep.
Okay.
Please.
All right, sorry. So, we had, other than my regular staff briefings, we had a staff breakfast down here one day on 10-16. I met with a constituent with Jeff Knighton in his office on the 24th. We had the library ribbon cutting on the 25th, Spotlight Shelton on the 30th. And today, I think most of us were up at the YMCA groundbreaking. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Inesco.
Outside of our staff briefings and city meetings, I intended a meeting in Seattle on homelessness on the 15th. I attended, on the 17th, the Chamber Monthly Lunch. On the 22nd, we had an exit interview with the auditors, the state auditors, and also attended the library ribbon cutting. On the 23rd, I attended the Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting, and we had a ribbon cutting, am I going, yeah, I'm in the right direction, Pacific Asset Management ribbon cutting down the road. And on the 30th, we did the Spotlight Shelton. It was a great turnout during a, was it a baseball game?
Game seven.
Game seven, yeah.
Got an important one, yeah.
And today, we attended the YMCA groundbreaking. Yay. So, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Cronz?
Well, I did a lot of the items that these two gentlemen talked about, and so I'll probably just say most of them, except a couple. And next week, I'll be doing my Criminal Justice Board meeting, I believe. I met with Mayor Bob Rogers last week for a little one-on-one conversation, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Two weeks ago, City Manager Knighton and I met with the county, County Commissioner...
Shute.
Shute?
Thank you very much, and Frank Pinner, to discuss the upcoming joint meeting with council, which is going to be next Tuesday. Attended the Spotlight Shelton, which was a great turnout for that night. I commend the city staff for being there and our city manager for making that happen. I will not be able to make our next meeting on the 19th. Deputy Mayor Peterson will be handling that. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I had two constituent meetings since our last regular council meeting, also had a meeting of the Peninsula Regional Transportation Project Organization at Bremerton, and looked at the legislative priorities of that group, which works on funding from a regional standpoint to ensure that the rural communities have some skin in the game and some of the funding mechanisms available for those projects. Also, attended the dedication of the library project completion, the housing issues briefing that was hosted by the Mason County Association of Realtors, Spotlight Shelton, and today's YMCA groundbreaking.
Thank you. Councilmember McDowell?
Visited the League of Women Voters, the candidates, we all were there, and we were asked some questions. Chamber Lunch, the library ribbon cutting, Realtors Lunch, met with several constituents during the couple of weeks, Spotlight on Shelton, attended the Employees Chili Cook-Off, briefing with Jeff, left board today, and groundbreaking for YMCA.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmidt?
I attended the Mason County Public Health Summit a couple of weeks ago now. That was a really great event, put on by Mason County Public Health and their partners, North Mason Regional Fire Authority, Mason General Hospital. It was a really, really good event to learn about some of the public health issues that face, that are, that we face, are faced with in the county, and understand sort of who our partners are in that adventure. And good information was passed, and it was very well done. Also, attended Spotlight Shelton. Thank you to everyone who attended that, and came out to learn about our projects in the community, and I look forward to continuing to see that process grow and flourish over the next year or two within this, within our, within our plans and the city manager's plans. Also, attended an EDC nominations committee meeting yesterday, and next week, Thursday, I have an EDC, Economic Development Council Board meeting, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. This was a session for our first period of general public comment. If you haven't filled out a card and wish to comment, fill out a card, and Donna will call you. We allow three minutes, and please identify yourself and whether you're resident of the city when you come forward. Donna?
There isn't anyone signed up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. Is it a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations. The first one is by Liz Arbaugh from the Historic Society about third quarter LTAC report.
Hello, thank you again for the city's continued support of the museum. It's greatly appreciated. I've been doing a lot of this LTAC stuff recently, and it has made me realize how the museum is just really an underutilized asset for the community, and it wouldn't even be here at all if it wasn't for the city's support, so, so thank you. We had, of course, a very busy summer and early fall, with roughly 200 and some people each month. We also had, you know, from 13 states and, what, six, five ministries this time, it was six last year. We also have had a couple of special events. We had the Canadian author Peggy Herring, who was at Hypatia in the woods, and she did a presentation about the wreck of the St. Nicholas, which was off the coast of Washington State in the mid, early 1800s. So, that was really fun. We also had, one thing I forgot to put on this, was the, we had Stan Graham, who did a presentation about the Civilian Conservation Corps and a lot of the building that they did in Mason County and, you know, Olympic National Park. We had a fundraiser cruise in September on the Lady Alderbrook, and we raised about $1,500, and it was, it was really, that was a fun event. We recently loaned several of our items for an exhibit in Edmonds at the Cascadian Art Museum, and when I talk about the museum being underutilized, this is, to me, this is a perfect example, because they, they were able to borrow some of our Ori Nobles collection, and they combined it with several other artists from Washington State, and for their opening night, they had over 400 people. So, you know, it would be great if we could do some of that kind of thing here as well. We've had students from Choice and from Evergreen, the students from Evergreen were learning how to use primary sources for their research, so, so that was, those are just, they're just great kids. It was really fun to see them. We have several really dedicated volunteers, because we're down a staff member right now, so it's, the volunteers have been stepping up. They've donated about 130 hours. And once again, I just want to thank you all for your support, and, thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Any questions for that?
I would just like to know if there's been an increase year after year in attendees?
Well, I've only been director there since March, so it's kind of hard for me to tell exactly. It seems like, I think originally, I just had no idea that there were so many people that came from out of state and came from around the world that ended up here. So, I don't know if that's necessarily an increase or not, but, yeah.
Just a quick follow-up. The event that you mentioned in Edmonds, and being, you know, kind of an underutilized, or, is there any support or anything that you potentially would need from us? If you don't have that information right now, feel free to reach out, to be able to pull that off in Shelton.
Yeah, because, you know, it was, to loan these things was kind of like giving away your children or leaving them at kindergarten for the first day, you know, it's like take good care of them. I think what, we need more staff, and to put on an exhibit like that takes money, and, you know, we're pretty much just kind of bouncing along the bottom as far as our budget. So, so funding is an important part of that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz, very much. Terry Snitzer, who's going to give us an update on our city investments, as well as audit results.
Yeah, good morning, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I just wanted to give you a quick update to the cash and investments for our third quarter. So, as you can see, we currently have almost 2.4 in our checking account, and then almost 9.4 million in our LGIP account, that's the local government investment pool, and then 2.3 is our long-term investments. That is increased $1 million from the last time I talked to you guys, and so that gives us a grand total of 14 million. And then to the right is a chart, the pie chart, that shows you what our investments are, so which is about 67% for the LGIP, 16.4% for the long-term investments, and then our checking account is 16, almost 17. We would like that to get to about a third of the pie for each of those categories, but we're getting there. So, this, this graph shows us the Treasury yield curve for August, September, and October. If you look at the reddish line, which is the October, you can see that it's flattening out from the previous two months, and that you can see from the three-month for October, it's, it's 1.67%, but also, if you look over to the seven-year, it's also at 1.67. So, long-term investments are still kind of low compared to the short term. But with, with the federal funds probability rate table, this chart was put together just before the feds took action, and they did lower the rate on October 30th, and it is currently at the 1.5 to 1.75. So, and it's not expected to have another rate increase probably until maybe April of 2020. So, probably expecting another cut, which means that the long-term investments rates will go up a little bit, but the short-term rates will go down. So, we'll be, and we're kind of seeing that now for our short-term investments, but they're still up there well enough. So, I wanted to let you know that the two that we just purchased in the beginning of October, where is, if you see the second, and the third one, which is the Fannie Mae for 400,000, and the Federal Home Loan Bank is for 600,000. The Fannie Mae one is a non-callable bond, so that, but it will mature on 5, 6 of 2021. And the Federal Home Loan Bank is a continuously callable, so when we see these rates continually to drop, we expect them to call it, and it would mature at that time. So, it, we don't expect it to last too long. So, the bottom graph shows, the blue is what it, the bonds would be for a timeline for when they're at maturity, but because we have a lot of callable ones, we expect it all to be within the one to two-year to mature. But we're working on getting a lateral approach investment portfolio, but it is going to take a little time to get there, but we're working on it. Is there any questions on the investments?
Any questions? I did not research one for you, Terry, so, sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, now to the 2018 state audit results. We all know that our state auditors were here. They began here in August and just concluded with our exit, exit meeting in October. And so, the audit was comprised of two significant audit processes, the financial statement audit, which examines the city's financial and accountability, which examines the city's processes in relation to law and policy. So, and we just want to mention that we really appreciate working with SAO, because they did help work with us quite a bit through our 18 records, and was very helpful and patient, and we got through it. So, the 2018 audit results, we did end up with a couple management letter items. One was for the reconciliation of the ending cash balance and to the checking account and to what our system says. So, and again, we're working through those issues. I think we've expressed that to council, and in a little update, that we will have Tyler Software out in January to help with our processes and to help work through any outstanding issues. And then the second item was, it says 1.8 million state grant funding was reported as federal funding. It's a matter of reporting it in Schedule 15 or Schedule 16. Because it is a federal grant, I put it on Schedule 16, and it actually, because of a special rule that I didn't, I was not aware of, it should have been on Schedule 15. So, we corrected that, but we ended up with a management letter for that. But I know for, I know that for 2019, it will not happen. So, there was three exit items. These are not reported in our final report from the auditor's office. They're just items to let council know. For small and attractive asset inventory, they identified that, you know, we didn't have a strong process, which through the transition of employees, we've started that again. Actually, when the auditor was here, we got right on that. The manual payroll adjustment, there was just an error, but payroll was working through that as to what their process should be to catch those errors before payroll is finalized. Procurement for the architecture and engineering services, it's already been addressed, and the city is updating their processes to ensure the compliance with the procurement and regulation laws. So, overall, it was a very successful audit, and as SAO mentioned at the exit, at the exit conference, that it noticed improvements that the city has, has done, and, and looks forward to working with us in the future years. The year-end audit process takes a team to be successful, so we appreciate all the departments working with finance to make sure that we all are in compliant, in compliance, but I would want to say a special thanks to our county staff, Cheryl Batrosov, Kim Kilmer, Elaine Merka, Bobby Smith, Megan Crossen, Jill Dickinson, and Lenieta Thompson, who stuck with us in 2018 and helped get these reports to where they can make a good report for the city. And additionally, we want to thank the city council and city manager for their support. And is there any questions?
Before we get questions, I'll just compliment your staff for doing it well this year and getting it done, and I think I personally appreciate that, and I think our council appreciates that, so kudos to everyone who did work this year.
Very much.
It's a vast improvement from where some of our new council members started at, a vast improvement. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else to comment or question?
And I'll basically echo that. It's not every day that you have a regulatory agency double-checking everything that you've done for the last year, and the amount of pressure that that puts on you and your staff to make sure that that is all taken care of and is carried out professionally and accurately, and what hangs in the balance if there are mistakes. There's, there's a lot there and a lot to ride on your shoulders, and we appreciate that very, very much. This is very good news for the city, and it's a sign of even better things to come down the road, so thank you very much for your, for your efforts.
And I did want to say one thing that was the most important thing, is that the city didn't get any findings.
Yeah.
So, that was the most important part.
That is, that is good.
Yeah. I appreciate that. It was done on time this year and not two years late.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
All right.
Thank you very much, Terry, and everyone, so. All right, we'll move on to our business agenda for this evening. Anyone sign up to comment on business?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Our first item is Public Works Director Craig Gregory has information about final acceptance for two projects, the 2019 chip seal and the residential paving.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Bring to you tonight the two public works projects in the Transportation Department for final acceptance, the 2019 chip seal and residential paving. The chip seal was awarded to Sierra Santa Fe and the residential paving to Central Paving, and the total budget for this for 2019 was 425,000, just slightly over budget with the two projects combined at 440,000. Those projects were, the paving projects were in the West Mountain View area, which was chosen through our road rating program, and then the chip seal was located in the North Mountain View area, in the Wallace-Nielan Shelton Springs area of the city. Those were completed late in the summer, early in the fall of this year, and both of them have been completed and ready for closeout. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Craig? Craig, I have just one que, one question I have, but we're doing chip seal again next year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the plan in the budget right now.
Okay, if, if we proceed with chip seals, are we going to change any procedures that we have, or did everything go well this year?
It was a little bit of a struggle this year, with this being the first time that we have performed chip seal with an outside agency. We will start talks with the county much earlier this year to possibly bring the county on to do our chip seal maintenance. If not, I think we learned a lot of lessons as far as inspection goes. There were some pitfalls with Sierra Santa Fe when they showed up on the job. It was a little rushed with them. They didn't give us a lot of notice before they did show up, so I think we learned a lot this year. We'll certainly partner also, I think, after a learning experience, partner with somebody like Tumwater, City of Olympia. They've done outside chip seal and have performed their own inspection, so I think we have a lot to learn from them. But I think we learned a lot with this program, and hopefully continuing to learn as we move forward with it in the future.
Okay, thanks, Craig.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion? Excuse me.
I'm going to concur to if this is on that contention.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Concur to moving forward, all right? I'm ahead of myself. Okay, our next is back to Craig Gregory, brief contract amendment and work order amendment.
So, just a slight change to this contract that we have right now with the Transpo Group for the design of the Civic Center parking lot. We have changed direction just slightly on them in the middle of their design. When they got back to us with design, with construction numbers, it included a storm facility that went out into, out into Coda Street with an onsite filtration system that was very, very expensive, probably out of our price range to construct that project overall. So, we have taken another look at that project to include an onsite retention pond just to the south of the parking lot, and also taking out some of the paving and turning some of the east portion of the parking lot into a community park to save some funds also. So, revamping that just a little bit for an increase of about, about $23,000 to change direction on them at this point, to redesign the storm pond and then that, that east portion of the parking lot, that they have agreed to at this point to reduce those costs. And I would be happy to answer any questions on the parking lot.
Let's go to Cronz.
I just, from somebody that just kind of observed this, I think it, most cities or a lot of cities could have just kind of let this thing kind of go, and just come and said, hey, we need an extra $50,000 or whatever, but I believe it was a combination of our city manager and staff probably saying, hey, let's take a look at this other option on this, this retention or stormwater experience, and just, I don't know who gets the credit, but the city has people that are, that are not just rubber-stamping things, they're actually going and creating extra work to save the city money on this one, and so thank you very much for your effort, and you guys on doing this, because that's what the citizens really like to see, is instead of just, you know, you can do this rubber-stamp stuff when an issue comes, but you, if you can save $50,000 or $100,000 or whatever by maneuvering some stuff around and working with it, that, I think that is, was brilliant, in my opinion, and so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, they're, just for clarification, they're going to redesign, they're going to design with the, with the assumptions here. They're going to redesign that pond to accommodate whatever storm needs are related to the parking lot and parking lot only, correct?
That, that's correct. I think when we do take a look at that, we will oversize it somewhat.
Okay.
If we need any more capacity further in the future, we do have a portion of that property that's still under city ownership, so I think sizing that appropriately so that it's not just the parking lot.
Great.
I think would be prudent to do.
Great.
Okay, would clear move this contract amendment?
Concur.
Board?
Yes.
All right. Next item is to our city manager Jeff Knighton to share information about a joint lobbying agreement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and members of the public. The city council and the county commission met back on June 11, earlier this year, to discuss the concept and the viability of a joint lobbying agreement between the Mason County, between Mason County and the City of Shelton, and how that might advance all of our interests as part of the community, moving forward in cooperation and as partners in some... in some of these legislative asks. Staff has, after that meeting, developed a framework that you have in front of you for an agreement with the county to share a lobbyist for various items on both of our legislative agendas. That comes off the comprehensive, the SEDS list, let me see if I can get this right, the comprehensive economic development.
Strategy.
Strategy. List for both Mason County and the City of Shelton. The agreement you have in front of you would require approximately $650 additional dollars per month over and above what we pay today. And, but I think would advance our interests along with our partners' interests in the community overall as we move forward. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Questions on this?
We talked the other day, and I think you were saying that this sharing would really only take effect when we have projects that benefit both the city and the county.
That's correct. So there are two, basically two hurdles, if you want to call them that. I don't really like to characterize them that way, but if you see it that way. It is part of the SEDS list that I mentioned and would benefit both jurisdictions. So both those criteria have to be met in order for a project to move forward. The other thing that I neglected to mention a little bit earlier, this is only for capital asks, capital request asks for it to build projects for our communities, not necessarily policy agenda items that we would like to see change at the state level. That would be done wholly on our own through the lobbying contract we have currently. And that portion of the contract won't change.
And I'll just add a little bit, a little bit disappointed that the EDC, Economic Development Council, wasn't able to come along with us on this one. I know it was out of the city's hands on this, but it would have been great to have that sort of three-way partnership in this as we move things forward on the economic development front in the county. I think it would have been a great opportunity, but understand that the county had other needs there and was unable to make that work out, so.
Anything else? One question. Anything new? It's always nice to not be in a long-term agreement. So this is, if it works out well for us and the county, I'm sure it'll be a long-term agreement, but that's not required.
That's correct. It renews automatically every year. However, there is a provision for either the city or the county, if they so choose, to end the relationship with a 30-day notice.
Okay. All right. So you want to move this forward to next meeting?
Action, yes.
Okay. So, all right. Next, back to city manager Knighton, information about the city's public defense contract.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. The public defense contract we have in front of you is an amendment to an existing contract that the council and our contracted public defender entered into at the end of 2018, excuse me, yeah, beginning of 2018 for 18 and 19 services, 19 and, I'm getting my numbers mixed up. The current contract, as it stands today, will end December of 2020. So this amendment would extend from today's date or through, from November of 2019 through the end of 2020. And basically what the amendment outlines is a raise for our public defender, and that raise is due to an increased caseload that was unanticipated under the current contract. The, we want to maintain a, as we'll talk about at our next meeting, a market rate so that we can attract talented people to the city to help do the public's work. And our rate that we were paying over the course of the contract due to the caseload numbers that are increasing has fallen well below what other jurisdictions charge in similar circumstances. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I failed to ask. Do we have any public comments?
No. We're not on action yet.
Oh, sorry. I'm ahead of myself again.
Is it normal to renegotiate a contract in the middle of a contract? I mean?
It's not, it's not typical. However, in this case, because we had fallen so far below the industry norm, I felt it was appropriate in order to retain qualified and competent public defense services for indigent population over the course of this term and any subsequent terms.
If, what if the caseload would actually fall?
If the caseload would fall, then we would be in a situation where we're overpaying. However, none of the trends are showing us that that's even a remote possibility at the moment.
Chief's laughing at it.
Yeah.
It's not slowing down, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you also negotiated the fee down from what, where it started, correct?
That's true. The ask was for substantially more than where we ended at, but I feel that, or I think rather, that where we ended is equitable for both parties and will retain those, that qualified council for our population.
Again, in my conversations with our city manager about this issue, I think he did a skillful job in negotiating this. And I was resistant at first, but he swayed me over to his side of logic, and I think he did a good job in what he's come up with. So I support this.
Anything on this side? All right. Agree to move this forward to the next meeting? All right. Now we move on to the action agenda. Anyone sign up?
There is no one signed up for action.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
So our first item is city manager Knighton to speak to us about 2020 legislative agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. The legislative agenda that you have before you tonight has not changed since the initial reading as part of the business agenda at our October 19th meeting, I believe it was, two weeks ago, three weeks ago. There are priorities on there. Several of the ones that I just wanted to take a moment to highlight include the Lake Hammers Agreement with Washington State Patrol and the resources that we're asking for in addition to the resources that we are adding ourselves to address the homelessness issue in our community. These are, these are issues that are important to the council and to city staff, and we'd like to have resources in order to address those in an appropriate way. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions for Jeff on this? Okay, I'll have Donna read resolution number 1152-0919.
Resolution number 1152-0919, a resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, establishing the 2020 legislative agenda.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 1152-0919 as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 1152-0919 as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to second action item, back to, oh, it's to Craig. Sorry, Craig. Amendment to the FCS group rate study.
Thanks again, Mayor and council members. We bring back to you again tonight the amendment to the FCS group contract. When we first started out with the FCS group, they took a look at our rates and brought us back a recommendation that staff was satisfied with. So we're proposing to have them move forward with a new structure for the stormwater rates and give multiple options to the council to take a look at. And with that, we also went back and, public work staff actually went back and looked at all of the accounts that have impervious surface and also the calculations that each parcel has of impervious surface. So to get an accurate count of what's actually out there in the City of Shelton and to make sure that we are billing for every parcel that is out there. And just something to point out and commend the public work staff, we got a bid to do that work of about $30,000. That seemed a little excessive, so city staff took that upon themselves to take that work on and complete that work. And we just completed it last week and got it off to the FCS group. So saving about $30,000 over the last four to six weeks.
Very good.
And completing that effort in-house instead of going out and contracting that. But the additional fee for the FCS group is about $7,600 to complete that alternative rate structure to bring back as an option to the city council. And likely that will be sometime late in 2019 or early in 2020, and we'll have multiple options for you to consider. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions, comments for Craig?
Just to comment, the rate study is important. As our finance director said, enterprise funds are designed to pay for the operations, maintenance, and capital improvements for the long run. And I think it's important to leverage this information in our decision-making as we move on. So supportive of that.
Right. So do we have a motion?
I move to approve the additional budget for the stormwater rate study and authorize the mayor to sign amendment number two to the current contract with FCS group.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the additional budget for the stormwater rate study and authorize me to sign amendment number two to the current contract with FCS group. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next item, we'll go to city manager Knighton to discuss.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council and members of the public. Very pleased after a long and sometimes painful negotiation with our postal service partners in Washington DC to present an agreement for you tonight for use of the area known as Post Office Park for this holiday season from November 18th through January 13th, which would allow the setup, celebration itself, and cleanup of our annual tree lighting event. That's what this agreement provides. There was, there are some, were some details that needed to be worked out, including a very nominal fee that the post office required and providing insurance requirements and all those other good things. We did have this as a late change tonight. I know you haven't had a lot of time to look over the information, but I would ask that instead of carrying this over to a second reading, that we would, or council would agree to move forward and sign this resolution this evening so that we can finalize the agreement with the postal service and get everybody out to celebrate the holidays as we have for 50 or more years. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for city manager? I'll just ask the questions, obvious to me, but just for the record, the license agreement is the standard license agreement from the post office.
The only changes that were made were an agreement on the fee and the dates that are on the cover page of that agreement.
Okay. So I'll ask for reading of resolution 1154-1119.
Resolution number 1154-1119, a resolution of the council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing a license agreement to use the area known as Post Office Park for holiday celebrations.
You have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 1154-1119, a resolution of the council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing a license agreement to use the area known as Post Office Park for the holiday celebrations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 1154-1119. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. And thank you, Jeff, and all the staff who helped get this done, at least in the short term. Thank you very much.
And hopefully we can find a permanent solution so we can use that park forever.
We are working on a permanent solution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, administrative report, city manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things I wanted to mention. First, I would like to introduce our new communications and government relations specialist, Mary Ricker. You all met her at the Spotlight Shelton event, and she's already been on camera at iFiber Radio. And it wasn't put too much on the spot, so that was a good thing. Mary's getting settled in and is going to meet all the other communications folks from around the community here probably next week to get acquainted, and we're very happy to have her onboard. Let's see, Spotlight Shelton, many of you mentioned that in your council reports, was very well attended, and I want to continue to have those events both here in the Civic Center and throughout the community. And what it's really designed to do is to have people come talk to us. We have short presentations at those events in order to provide some information to our community, but really, you know, come talk to us. It's, we're not just the government, we're people. We want to hear what you have to say, and that's what these events are designed to do. And they don't always have to be the greatest things, as long as, as long as we can, we can talk about issues facing the community and people in the community can help us find solutions. That's what we're, what we're trying to accomplish. Wanted to mention also Library Hill Trail. About Library Hill Trail and how long it will remain closed. The plan at this point is to keep it closed for a period of monitoring and evaluation to see if the solutions that we've implemented have worked to address the issues in that neighborhood. And assuming it has at this point, and we will monitor to make sure that it has, we would expect to reopen that trail sometime in the spring of next year. And continue to monitor that to make sure that it stays, stays the way it, the way it is today after, after the closing of the trail. Lastly, well, lastly for me, and then I'm going to turn it over to Director Gregory for a few minutes. Wanted to wish everybody a very happy Veterans Day for next Monday. And with that, we're having a meeting tomorrow evening here in the Civic Center about our Western Gateway Project, and I'd like Director Gregory to address that and a couple other things.
So as city manager Knighton pointed out, tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, we will be holding the Western Gateway Project, kind of intro to that project, and it is going to be a very short presentation. We're just getting into the first portions of design, and really, we want to bring the public in to really get ideas. What are the thoughts from the public of the things they want to see? The design elements that they want to see from on Railroad Avenue from 7th out to the city limits? What are maybe some of the hurdles or things we need to get through that we haven't thought about? We certainly don't think about everything out there or consider everything, so we like to hear from the public and the business owners. We already have met with the, what was the Downtown Visioning Group and some business owners from that area. We met with them about a week and a half ago and got some ideas from them. We'll continue that conversation after we get a little further into this, but we really want to hear from the public that will be affected down in that area and the general motoring public and bring the ideas to us so that we can consider those and see what we can and can't do. And those will be from funding, just to see if we can do some of those things that the public wants. So tomorrow night at 6 o'clock here in the Civic Center. And then the other thing that I wanted to point out tonight, want to thank council member Dorsey for attending the Infrastructure Assistance Coordinating Council Awards Banquet almost two weeks ago on the 23rd over in Wenatchee. Quite a travel over there for a one-day event or a luncheon.
For lunch?
But at that awards ceremony, council member Dorsey received on the city's behalf the Transportation Project of the Year for the Downtown Connector Project, which was very exciting for us to get with all the hard work that went into that $5 million project that benefited the community, and we couldn't have done it without the help of the council, city staff, and all of our state representatives, the Transportation Improvement Board, WashDOT staff that helped us out with the traffic circle, and the contractors, Gray and Osborne, Watch Construction, and everybody else that participated in the design, development, and construction of that project. So happy to, happy to receive that award for Washington State Transportation Project of the Year from the Infrastructure Assistance Coordinating Council. So thank you, council member Dorsey.
Most welcome. I was happy to do it.
And I thank you especially.
And I thank you especially.
Thanks, Craig.
And I want to share one little thing, can I?
Yes, sir.
When I brought the award back, I actually brought it the next morning, I got back kind of late and Mr. Knighton said he expects he's going to receive more of those in the coming years.
Absolutely.
So I'm going to hold him to it.
Multiple candy corn awards.
I'm going to back up one agenda item. I forgot general public comment for the second period. Did we have anyone?
It was a safe skip because we don't have anyone.
I just wanted to make sure, so, thank you, Donna. Okay, city manager?
When, when I was discussing the Post Office Park lease, I ought to have mentioned our federal partners that did help with that. Congressman Denny Heck's office, specifically Dallas Roberts, helped us out a lot with that and I want to thank him, thank him very much. Congressman Kilmer's office also helped us a lot and both of our senators, Murray and Cantwell's offices, were also very instrumental in helping us get this agreement. It's amazing when your federal office, what a call from a congressional office can do. So we, we really appreciate their help on that, in that endeavor and I wanted to make sure I got that in.
Okay, thank, thank.
I have one little announcement.
You have one announcement to make? Well, we're to that point, so. Make it for the good of the order.
Can we do it right now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Monday Veterans Day, I think we're having the very first veterans parade that Shelton has ever had. Maybe I'm wrong there, but we had other ones.
As far as I know, they decided not to do the parade for March this year. They're doing a veterans breakfast and looking expanding on that next year.
Okay, forget I said anything.
Okay. Any, any other council members have something to say this evening? Seeing none, our next meeting will be November nineteenth at six PM. We are adjourned.